All right. Good evening, everybody. Today is July 19th. It's the monthly meeting of the planning board. If everyone could stand up and say pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The first item on the agenda is a special permit application with site plan approval. Public hearing continued for Adversive Wellness at 1375 Main Street. This is to be withdrawn per the applicant's request. Can you read the notice, please?
Town of Millis Office of the Planning Board Notice of Public Hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 11 Mass. General Law, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 19th, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the Veterans Memorial Building, Room 229, 900 Main Street, Millis, on the application of Tony Verzuzza, Adversive Wellness, Inc., 1375 Main Street, Suite B, requesting a special permit for, with site plan approval of zoning bylaw of the Town of Millis for proposed manufacturing marijuana establishment and a portion of an existing industrial building locating at 1375 Main Street, Suite B, Millis, Mass. Assessors' map, 21, Parcel 5. Owner: L&amp;L Realty Holdings. Copy of the application and site plan is on file in the office of the Town Clerk and can be reviewed at the town's webpage. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time and place designated. Richard Nichols, Chair.
And this is, this application has been asked to be withdrawn by the applicant, so I make a motion that we accept the withdrawal.
Second.
All right. Motion's made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And I'm going to close the public hearing. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item on the agenda is 808 Main Street, McDonald's Restaurant Field Change Request. Um, I think, yeah, I'm trying, as long as they can see it. If you look at the TV set, as long as you can see it. I don't know if you can see it. If you put it in front of the TV.
Oh, I got it.
That's the key. I think if you put it right in front of that, it would probably be okay. Face it this way. I think the camera's behind me. Nope, it's in front of me. It's that camera.
It's this one over here.
It's, it's the one over there, I think, because they're facing me.
There you go.
Yeah, you're facing, yeah.
We have copies as well, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's more for the public, that's all. We actually had a whole protocol on this, but in the past year, I forgot it. Yep, it's all good. We've seen it anyhow. We know what it is, yeah.
All right. Name is Dan Allen, with Bowler. I'm working as a civil engineer.
Could you, sorry, if you use the mic, because they'll hear you. Sorry. You can bring it up just like, just like Bob Barker.
You can show in your age.
Name is Dan Allen. Work with Bowler Engineering. And here tonight, we're the civil engineer on the McDonald's project. And here tonight, representing the applicant. We're here to request a change to the proposed site plan. Where during construction, it's under construction right now, kind of ran into some existing shrubbery on the east side of the property line that was overgrowing a little bit and felt like it was going to impact the proposed plantings along there. As such, it would probably require a lot of maintenance annually just to kind of keep those from overgrowing and hindering the growth of the plants. Discussions with the landlord, I think they were going to look to trim it. And they ended up removing the plants we had seen. As such, we were hoping to kind of still provide some screening to that, the back of the commercial building on the adjacent property and are looking to propose just a six-foot-high fence along that side and then just have some gravel, stone in between the curbing and then the fence. We'll still be proposing the four trees along there as well, but the original plantings, we're kind of proposing to not provide those and instead provide the gravel.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have anything to say?
Would you mind just clarifying on the map on the site plan that you have here, where the gravel extend to? So we're talking about the curb up until the end of the fence?
Uh, yeah. So the, you can see kind of the first parking stall on the east side. So right there, the stone will extend along the curbing all the way just to the trash corral at the rear.
Okay.
So that's where the fence would just be right behind it as well. Yep.
Anyone else? So I had two thoughts. So I think it's, I think it's a fine idea. My only suggestion is, number one, I'd like to make it a condition that at some point in time, you would clean any graffiti that would be put onto the fence.
Mm-hmm.
Because I can see that as a whiteboard and that would be really exciting to draw things on. So if you guys could have it where we put it as a condition, I don't know, twice a year, you clean the graffiti off it. I mean, I don't want to make it over burdensome, but I think if it ends up, you know, becoming a problem, I'd like to have that in the condition.
Yeah, I don't think the operator wants to keep that out there either, so.
And the other thing would be, I know you aren't going to put the bushes in, which is fine. That makes 100% sense. Maybe like an ivy or something like that. Just at least you have a little green on the fence. It's, you know, a low, an ivy's almost low or no maintenance. You could plant it and if it grows, great. And if it doesn't, you know, I think there might be something to kind of break up the expanse of white.
Eric Wagner's also here with McDonald's. Would you be comfortable with that?
So originally, we were looking at proposing a color.
You have to, you have to.
Oh, sorry.
You can go up to that.
That one too. Sorry.
So originally, we were looking at to propose a color to match the building so we wouldn't have a stock white fence all along the side. If it is available, we were considering doing that, either a gray or a tan color to minimize the white around the site. So we were looking at doing that. If you, but if it's not available because of COVID and supply's not available, we would then revert back to the white color.
What's the board think on that? I, you know, I'm just trying to, I mean, I think the fence is going to look good. I mean, I don't, don't get me wrong. It just, it's a long, no matter what you have, it's going to be a long expanse of fence.
Sure.
And, you know, and the same thing. I don't want to be over burdensome, but if you could break it up with, you know, typically like a fence like that, they'd have some planting or something to break it up a little bit in front. Yep. You know, either, like I said, the ivy kind of grows and it'll also cover up. It'll be hard to put graffiti on if there's ivy in the way. And, and it might kind of break up the white and it's no maintenance, you know, just, just, just a thought.
Is there going to be spacing between the fencing or is this a vinyl, like it's a flat?
It would be a flat vinyl, continuous, continuous fence all the way down.
Okay.
That was the purpose of, I know the board is passionate about the trees. We're going to keep that to make sure there was some greenery, is that. The only concern I have about ivy is during the wintertime, I think it would die. And what do you do during, during that time, during the winter?
Yeah, I mean, you know, like I said, I'm not pushing it one way. I was just talking, it's a suggestion. I mean, the colored fence may be something to.
I agree. Probably better muted.
Yeah.
Having a stark white.
But we don't want to lock you in. I mean, if you can't get it, you know, we don't want to hold you guys up, so.
Stock whites also, as you said, that getting a colored would be better because stock white's going to be a real pain for them to try to keep clean.
Yeah. Go ahead, please do.
I'm a little confused. So you're going to have the fence and then gravel and then the?
Curbing.
The curbing?
Yep.
And then parking.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I was thinking, okay. Now I get to clear my head. Thank you. How wide is this section with the curbing?
Uh, it's about four, I think a four-foot section from the edge of curb to the property line where the fence would be proposed along.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I meant from the fence to, like, the fence to the curbing, how far is, how much gravel will you have?
Oh, it's about four feet of gravel.
Okay.
It's about a four-foot width.
There's a minimum amount of space and that's why we're just concerned about plantings and maintaining it and overtaking everything.
So our consulting engineer, Beta, what they said to, was their comment was, consider at least five shrubs or other plantings between each of the four proposed trees along proposed fence to provide some greenery and visually break up the long stretch of white fence. So what they had said was, and we understand, you guys had come back and said that you were concerned that the car's going to run into the bushes. So that might be, so could you guys maybe do something that?
Other plants that aren't nearly as obtrusive?
Yeah, I mean, is there, is there some sort of a smaller, you know, shrub? And assume, you know, they're going to run into it, you know, could you plant some yews or, I don't know, something that maybe could go in? The whole idea is just to break up that white.
Yes, we could. The only reason we kind of push back on it a little bit is the number of plantings that we have around the property is an extensive number. If you look at the report off the right-hand side of the chart, so we're just trying to keep, you know, cut that down a little bit to minimize the amount of upkeep that we have to do to the property. Want to be able to keep the trash and everything clear, not getting into the shrubbery and easy to maintain.
So I think that's five shrubs. I don't think that's, I don't think that's too much.
In between each tree.
In between each. I think that would be a total of 15.
About 20 or so, or 15?
15, I think, between the four trees.
Yes, we would be amenable to that if it was required.
So ivy, ivy's a no-go.
Okay.
But if you, you know, if you could do something to break up that, that fence, you know, we could leave it that, you know, pick something that people can run into and they can plow snow against.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, good. All right. I don't see any, yeah, I don't see any other issues. I think that's all good.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we approve the field change for 808 Main Street fencing. All right. Motion's been made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, great. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. The next item on our agenda is an informational presentation on MBTA community rezoning initiative. So I'll give you a little preface before Bob gets started. The state has put forwards a initiative for any MBTA communities, which is any, any town that has MBTA service within a certain distance. And they are basically requiring us to create zoning areas. So, or they will cut our funding. There'll be funding that would not be available and they actually, instead of normally they do the carrot and the stick, on this one, they have the stick and the stick. So several of the towns have actually written letters to the state and also considered action against the state on this because in certain towns, it impacts them more severely than larger towns or towns that have more, are more affluent. So there's some concerns. There was just an article in the Globe last Saturday in one of the editorials. So anyhow, this is, this is something that we're, we're having to deal with. Bob is the head of the economic development and planning, so he can explain more to the details on this. And with that, cheery entry. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
As my computer warms it up, warms itself up. Good. Well, for the record, I'm Bob Weiss and, yes, Bob Weiss. I'm the Economic Development and Planning Director for the Town of Millis. And I am here to update, really, on the MBTA communities multi-family housing rezoning. What you're seeing before you really is what, I believe, most everyone who's responsible for this law has in mind, which is examples of housing that's at 15 units per acre. And these are some that have been built in neighboring communities. You can see Lexington, Sudbury. You see some mixed use also, such as we have across the street here at, was it 960, 969 Main Street at the Centennial Park. And so that is what everybody's hoping, it looks like. It's not going to be a monstrous thing, but it depends on the town and really what the town, the town that's involved wants to, wants to do. So the MBTA zoning, communities zoning changes, as the chairman has pointed out, that it's 175 communities in the metropolitan Boston area, basically surrounding Boston. Those are the areas, that's the area within which the MBTA really can reach. It's Mass. General Law. It is law now. It's Mass. General Law 40A, Section 3A. I just kind of called it my notes 40A, 3A. But I also like to consider it, if you will, in terms of here, of Millis's Town Center redevelopment, something which we, if you remember, the Urban League Institute did a planning study with us last year. So what I'm really here to tell you about, and I introduced it, I think, in February this year, is, you know, what it is, what this zoning law is and what it is not. So it is, the MBTA community shall create a sizable, multi-family district which allows by right a minimum of 15 units per acre. And the way they figured that out is that if you, it's a minimum of 750 units. And that's been a point of contention because some communities, you know, like Millis, if, the law really reads 10% of your housing stock if you are an adjacent community, which is what we are. And, but yet, it also says 750. So there's, a lot of communities are thinking, well, we only have 1,200 units of housing. How are we going to build 750 units? So that's something that the guidelines are going to have to figure out. Guidelines are being figured out now. They should be released by the, they're saying by the end of the summer or in the fall sometime. But what I want to emphasize with this is that it's about families. Families are really the economic development driver in the Boston metropolitan area. And that's the key. It's, it's family housing. It's not being restricted by age. Businesses come to places that grow. And that's the theory behind a lot of this.
Bob, can I ask you a question?
Go right ahead.
To interrupt. So, so if I'm a developer and I come in and we have this really nice zoning, what number of those units need to be sold? If I, say I do 100-unit development, what number of those units have to be sold or rented at below-market rate? Is it like 40B where they could do 75% to 80% of the units would be at regular market rate and then only 20%? So my question is, is, that sounds great. I love families. But if this really isn't going to be affordable housing, is this really something that is not going to help us? It's going to be another burden?
Well, the answer to your question of how many would have to be at below-market is zero. And I'm going to get to that in a minute.
Okay.
One of the controls that the town will have is we'll still have some design controls in the area. So we can make this, and the theme here, I think, the thing going forward in town is, let's make this thing, let's make this fit Millis. And we can do that. We can say, you know, some, some parts of the area, we want 20 units per acre because, you know, like, like down at Union Street, where right now, we're looking at a 40B that's as tall as the old Herman Shoe Factory on the same site, and that's five-story. That's going to be, so, you know, we can say it's about 15 here, maybe 20 here. So we have some control over that. We still have design features such as the height of the buildings. We can say what the setback's going to be, what parking will be. If we want to put form-based codes in, we can do that as well. So we have some control over the design of the area. Now, what it doesn't mean is that we have to build 750 units of, of housing. It means, what really means is we have to create an area where it's going to be relatively easy to build multi-family housing, whether it's three families, two families, whatever it is. So we just need to have the capacity. 2,000 people are not going to be moving into Millis overnight. This is going to take time. It's going to take time to develop. It's going to take time for the market to realize where there are opportunities. So we, all we have to do is create the area. That's what we're doing.
Could I ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
So going back to capacity. Capacity brings up a subject that was talked about on Monday. So Millis does not have any sewer capacity. So now, the question I would go back to the state is, okay, we think it's great. We'll give you guys the area to do it, but that means that they have to put in a septic system to do that. Or, or is the burden on the town to figure out a way to take care of the sewer? Because that was a question that was asked by another town, is, you know, if they come in and they say, okay, you guys don't have sewer capacity, the Town of Millis needs to figure it out. Is that part of the requirement too?
That is not part of the requirement, as I have seen it. It will, a lot of towns have probably have high, high water tables, which Millis does too. And so the areas will probably be getting bigger because of that. But it will still be on the developer to figure out, you know, if there's going to be a septic system. But the town will also want to say, you know, the town's going to look at and say, you know, maybe we do want to somehow figure out, put in a big plant somewhere and, and help out the development. So we've got, we've got a year, year and four months before we really have the town meeting, the first town meeting to decide this. So there's a lot of opportunity for us to discuss this thing and how it's going to, you know, how, how we make it help us and what we can do. So the onus won't be on the town to say, okay, we're going to have to provide the sewer capacity for you.
Okay. I just, I just, in my understanding of it, that was never explicitly said. So my concern is that, you know, they've, they have this mandate and it's going to throw this back on to the town. And so what we will be doing, have forced to do is we will be forced to provide a, you know, a mini-plant for a developer to come in, build units, sell them at market rate to meet this mandate. And basically, you know, it's going to be a significant burden on the town.
Okay. That is not my understanding. We got to wait to see what the guidelines have to say. But the guidelines did not mention, as I, I read them, did not mention anything about the responsibility of the town to make sure the capacity for utilities is there.
Okay.
Now, we do already have an area where a lot of this already exists. It is by special permit, of course, and not by right. There's a big difference there. We have incentives and, again, it's in the, the town center area. We have incentives that will reward density and open space and affordable housing with, with more density, up to, up to 15 units per acre. So it's, so again, the market is going to be kind of sorting all this out and which towns are, you know, at that sweet spot and, and which towns where the value of the land enables the developers to go. The one thing about the by right is that it does make it more predictable for home builders. And so a home builder takes a look at, well, if they take a look at our, our zoning, they said there's five different zoning, right in the center of town, we have five different zoning areas and an overlay. It makes it kind of confusing. And plus, they know that, you know, coming into Millis, it's going to be up to my presentation to a board as to whether I'm going to get this. It's a big front-end expense that they have to make. Here, it is by right.
Bob, may I ask a question? So I'm concerned about zoning. Like you mentioned, most of what we allow is granted via special permit, which, as you stated, comes with all sorts of conditions that have to be satisfied. And as we have seen many times, don't. It would be much cleaner if we were able to amend our zoning, which I think is something that's going to have to happen and if we're going to be able to facilitate the MBTA communities the way that 40A probably intends. That's not something that can be done instantaneously. It requires a lot of time. What's the expectation when it comes to zoning to make sure that our town is accommodating to the type of development that they're looking for?
I'm glad you asked that. Great. I'm going to get to that. So, and what this is not, as you mentioned before, Mr. Chairman, this is not about affordable housing. Affordable housing, we know, is covered by 40B.
Right.
This is really an opportunity, the way it's being seen is it's an opportunity to build market-rate homes that are affordable to working families. It's, it's really about, and I look around, it's really about our kids. It really is. You know, it's about the kids who are becoming plumbers and engineers and technicians and, and film and video editors and media, multimedia marketing folks like my kids are. And, you know, there was an article this morning in the business section of the Globe, a medical tech company, a very large one from France, has just moved into the, to the technical center down on, on the waterfront. And they're going to be looking for several thousand people to work. And so with the salaries that's going to be paying, which are going to be decent salaries, but where are these people going to live? They can't live downtown. They can't live in the seaport because it's so expensive. And they want to have places where they can raise families. So that's, that's really what this is trying to answer. We can build some affordability, not into this, but we can have some affordability at the same time. We can, we can change our affordability bylaws. But that would have to be done on a separate, on a separate vote because this is a 50% plus one vote in the.
Bob, we have one other question.
Bob, you and I have discussed this in the Economic Development Committee meetings, but I didn't know if you could explain it to the board because we have started the initial conversations with regards to instituting a, an affordable housing zone, something into our zoning requirements that any, any subdivision or every subdivision that comes into town having and requiring a portion of it be 40B because we are just getting with every subdivision, if there isn't one, we're getting so far behind. If we establish that, if we're able to establish a 40B requirement, an affordable housing requirement for any residential building, can this apply to 40A? So that if we have some, if we have a development that comes in on this multi-family by right, can we, can we require that a percentage of that, whatever the percentage is that we choose that's across the board for every development, can it also apply to this development?
I believe yes.
One of those questions that hasn't fully been.
Yeah, yeah, it really hasn't. It won't be part of 40A, but because it's going to be part of a separate, be separate, or an article because I think, I believe those zoning changes require two-thirds, right? So, and I do think it would be able to, you would be able to apply it to this section. That's my understanding so far.
So this 40A zoning would not be exempt from a 40, if we, if we institute across the board all future development have a, an affordable housing component to it, this 40A, 3A would not be exempt from that?
That's the way I, I understand it, yes. And I think the, the big picture here really is. That's the way I understand it, yes. And I think the big picture here really is that, you know, we are part of the Boston metropolitan area. We are part of its economic development. We get the benefits of the economic development. I mean, you look around, folks around here, there's jobs. People are working at very good jobs. That's part of the economic development of the area. But there are also consequences. And we know about the consequences of development in the Boston metropolitan area, specifically the old zoning under which we've done it, has caused a lot of sprawl, and that causes a lot of traffic, and we only have to look out, you know, the front windows here to see that on Main Street. So growth is inevitable in the area. We know that. And so that gives us, that's going to give us some economic development. As I said, businesses come to places that grow. We do have, you know, a number of issues that have already been brought up. We know about the site review that we like to see, traffic problems, as you mentioned before, Mr. Chairman, we got a sewer capacity problem here. But the idea is to try to make this fit Millis. And it's, you know, it's not going to be uncontrolled growth. It's going to be growth that fits. We do have a process. We do have a consultant on board already, and it's going to take about a year and four months now until the November of 2023 meeting, and maybe even another six months beyond that if we want to, we think it takes more analysis. What I'm trying to do, want to do tonight, is to start talking to folks about an advisory committee. This committee is going to oversee, kind of oversee, you know, and analyze the process, the progress, and take a look at what the consultant comes up with in terms of zoning analysis and the parcel analysis. It will probably officially meet about six times, because we have six different steps in the process. There will be a startup. There will be a zoning analysis of what we have now, and how is it, you know, how can we clean that up? There'll be a town-wide meeting, too, for visioning. And so we'll bring people together and let folks, I don't know if we'll do it here or do it during a select board meeting, have folks from all over town be able to participate and see what is going on. The consultant will then be doing a parcel-by-parcel analysis to see how, exactly how it's going to fit and how big the area is going to be. They will, again, they will come back and report to the, when they're done with that, they'll report to this advisory committee. There'll be another town-wide engagement. They will come up with a couple of different zoning recommendations that we'll want to bring to the town meeting. And when the advisory committee figures out, okay, this looks like the best one to come up with, we'll figure out an adoption strategy and a support campaign that we feel comfortable it will work here in town. So what I'm looking for are some members on this committee. I don't know how many people it will have, but it should be people whose approach is, you know, you'd be somewhat skeptical, that is fine. Somewhat skeptical of the idea. But people who feel, you know, it's inevitable, if all these communities are going to be doing it, let's get out ahead of this, do some analysis here, let's have a process, and let's see how we can make it fit. So anybody who, like, knows somebody who should be on the committee, or anybody who wants to be on this advisory committee, just please get ahold of me. That's my email and my phone numbers, and you can, people can get ahold of any one of the folks here on the board, of Rich or Nicole, and you guys know how to get ahold of me, and Camille. You know, I'll know how to get ahold of me. So that's what I'd like to start building right now.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Bob, has there been a clarification as of yet with regards to location for adjacent communities, which we are? Because the regulation states that this zoning has to be within half a mile of an MBTA station, whether it is commuter rail, subway, train, and as an adjacent, 77 of those communities are adjacent communities, meaning they don't have commuter rail access within their town. So for us, we don't, we're not half a mile from one. However, there, from some of the things that I was reading, is there a question, does that mean we have, it has to be within half a mile of our closest, the roads that are closest? So for us, 115 is the, that area at the Millis-Norfolk line is the closest location to the Norfolk commuter rail, because that's the only town that we are in a, a butter, a direct a butter for MBTA. And that, for us, you know, I know they reference downtown, but that's our half a mile, or, you know, as close to a half a mile as we could get. And for us, that is not, personally speaking, not on behalf of the board or anyone else in town, to me, that's not an appropriate location to be putting in potentially a fairly large multifamily dwelling. Have we determined whether we have to be, where an adjacent community is going to locate it? Have they come out and actually answered that question yet?
Well, as you mentioned, it has to be, what I've read in the guidelines so far is that it needs to be, if it's not within a half a mile of a station itself, it should be on, close to a road that can get you access to it. As you said, 115 is, could be that road. I mean, it could be Village Street, but it's got to be the, shorter distance, it's practical.
So for Millis, we're not looking at, realistically, this is not going to be a zone, however the zoning is done, we're not looking at, like, in the downtown area, in the center of town. We're looking at, in a more, in a, in a more residential, not a...
We could be, and that's what, that's, I think, what they're going over with the guidelines now.
Okay, so it hasn't been completely...
So it's not, yeah, yeah. Because they want, they also want it to be in the practical place. It's also about smart growth. And to start building, you know, if you want to build a, in, let's say, on Village, you know, where we just bought the farm, I mean, that's, that's on the commuter road to Norfolk Station. And it doesn't really seem to make sense there. I mean, it might make sense farther down Village where there is a lot of dense housing now, but there's no room for it. So it's going to be, it's about smart growth, too. And I think that's what we're going to be seeing coming out of the guidelines.
Can I follow up on that, Bob?
Yeah.
So on the, so we're going to put a proposal together. We have to submit that to the state, correct? Because it has to be approved.
Right.
So they really haven't given us any specific guidelines. We have to throw something out there. They're going to look at it and tell us if they like it or don't like it. So my question is, has there been any talk of pushing out this deadline or until there's some guidelines? Because basically, they're asking us to make decisions and set up all this information and get these zones set up, and they haven't given us any guidelines on this. So my question is, is I don't think it's a bad idea to have the conversation, but I would be concerned, not knowing the parameters, to make a decision. They could say, "Hey, guys, we changed our mind." So...
I've heard nothing about pushing the deadline. As far as I know, back in February, I brought in, there were three benchmarks that we had, had, had to hit. The first one, we already submitted our information. The next one would be next July, I think it is, to come up with a plan. So that's the next guideline. I've heard nothing. I mean, it's possible they may say, "Oh, let's put this off a bit," but the law says what the law says, so we'll have to see what happens. This is one of the reasons why I went out, I wanted to go and get ourselves a consultant early on, somebody who's on top of all of this, because I think it would, it's, the smart community is the one that's going to start planning as far in advance as possible, and being able to analyze information that's coming from the, coming from the State House.
Mr. Chair, go ahead. Who's the consultant?
We'll be, we'll be using MAPC, and they brought to us, they brought a, so far, they brought about a $45,000 technical assistance grant with them. We have applied for the balance of that, with about another, it's 84, probably about 84, $85,000 in all, to the One Stop, the Community One Stop for Growth Program for DHCD. I feel, and we'll hear about that in November, and I feel very confident about that, because we've hit a lot of the, we've pressed a lot of the buttons that they're requiring us to do. We're now a complete streets, neighborhood, complete streets community. We've already raised $40,000, $45,000 towards our consulting fees, and we're a community growth community. So we've done a lot of the things that the Community One Stop folks want to see. So I'm pretty confident we'll get that, and we'll be going forward with the MAPC.
Quickly reading this letter from the Town of Midway. They're not happy, obviously.
I'm sorry?
Oh, that's a different, that's a whole different one. I, in our packet, we had, we had a letter from the Town of Midway Planning, and they had brought up some of the points that I brought up to you, were some of the points that I had also thought of, of the, you know, lack of fully developing this, this, you know, requirement. And, you know, going back to the, like you said earlier, the smaller towns are more affected than larger towns, because we have a different population in residence, but we're forced to the same number of housing units. So there's significant, and unfortunately, this thing got passed. There was a, you know, we found out, basically, it was, I think, a week before it was passed. Not that they listened to any of the comments from the towns, but this was basically passed and imposed upon the lucky MBTA communities. So we're, like you said, we're making it fit to Millis.
And what happens if we can't make it fit?
You know, it's up to the town. If the advisory committee says, you know, "This is just not going to work here," and we go to the town, and the town meeting said, you know, "This is just not, here's the best we can do," and the town meeting says, "No," then we don't have a, we don't have a plan that's going to fit a 48, 3A.
So the question, going back to that, is then, so basically, they've imposed this on us. So my question to you on that is, okay, we can't make it fit for Millis, or maybe we could make it fit, but it wouldn't work for the state. So now, this is a stick and a stick. So basically, they're going to beat us to do it, and then what they're going to do is, if we don't do it, then they're going to beat us again. So what is the penalties if we don't do that?
They're looking at a number of grants that are now part of the One Stop program, specifically the Mass Works, for instance, which is for infrastructure, and to help us build infrastructure. So, you know, we say, well, we like to build a, increase our sewer capacity, and build some sewers and maybe some sidewalks. We have to go to the end of the queue after those towns that do have adopted 48, 3A.
Yes, I have to remember, too, we're a very small town, like most of the towns out here. They want us to be a city. We don't want to be a city. We want to stay a small town. You know, we got, what, eighty, maybe 8,500 people right now? If we do this, we're going to be up to, there was a report one time, probably 10 years ago, that if they build Millis out the way it is, it'll be 12,000 people, max, maybe by 2035. Okay? I don't think the town can support 12,000 people. And if you start putting all this in, you get on 115, somebody buys up a farm and starts putting up, you know, so you're utilizing the MBTA, which is a farce to begin with, because they can't keep their trains running. So now you have to go from the Midway, excuse me, the Norfolk line, Millis line, by car to get to the train station, which there's limited parking to begin with. So it's...
If the, if the density is focused in the town center, the rest of the town pretty much stays the same in terms of, you know, how it looks, single families and such.
Then you're going to have to have a bus in the town center to take them to...
Right, right. And that's one of the things that will, for the Community One Stop, we, what I applied for was five, they want you to apply for five different projects to develop, you know, your, like, in our case, the town's town center redevelopment. The first one was to have a plan. We did a plan through the Urban League, the second, through the ULI. The second one is, the second part of that is, they call zoning. It's all part of a continuum, they say. The second part of that is zoning, and to have the zoning changes that you need for your redevelopment. Then come a number of things, which transportation and grants for buildings. We're looking at a grant for the Lansing-Millis Memorial Stabilization Grant, but we're also looking for a transportation node, somewhere where we can have a bus or a shuttle stop in the town to pick folks up, to take them over there.
One last question. Who came up with all these brilliant ideas? The MBTA?
I don't think the MBTA had anything to do with, with the idea, other than, the MBTA kind of goes out to these 100 and feels that it serves these 175 communities, one way or the other. And we do pay the MBTA every year. We pay them $30,000 for the privilege of driving over to Norfolk. And we don't even have the ride in this town, which is a problem. But I think what the folks who are behind this saw was, okay, this is the Boston metropolitan area. It's served by, it's supposed to be served by the MBTA, and that's where the development is going to happen. And I think, you know, it came out in the legislature, and that's where, that's where, I believe, the origin of the species is, the legislature.
Go ahead, Josh.
Chair, well, I just have a question as well. So under 48, which board is designated to determine whether we are in compliance or non-compliance with the chapter?
That's the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Development, okay, DHCD. So if they determine, they haven't given us, to the chair's point, they haven't given us a set of guidelines that we can really adhere to. They're determining a lot of things. If we don't have a set of guidelines, are they, is it just at their discretion, they can determine that we're just in non-compliance at any given point? How do they, and if so, you know, how much burden is there going to be on the town to try and fall within the guidelines? Because to the chair's point, it feels as if we'll just get beaten by a stick, go to the end of the line in terms of grants, which we desperately would need for some infrastructure costs that the town already needs. So it just, I'm trying to figure out, if we just don't have much of a say, and we're just being browbeaten a little bit by this board that's been given discretionary power under 48, I just want to understand how the compliance works and who determines?
Well, it is, the onus is upon the DA, upon the Department of Housing and Community Development to come out with the guidelines. We'll see, as I said, we'll see at the end of the summer or sometime in the fall, early fall, what those guidelines are, and that will give us some, some direction to go.
Okay. When does the decision, excuse me, need to be, I know we're putting the committee together, when do we need to have something presented before them?
Well, that would be after the, that would be in probably sometime just before the town meeting in 2023.
Twenty-three?
Yeah.
Spring or fall?
Yeah, because they'll want to see spring or fall '24, yeah. The deadline on this is the end of 2024. So that's why I say the fall, you know, the spring meeting of 2024, maybe we can do 2020, the fall meeting of '24. The, we'll, in July of '23, we will have... The, we'll, in Jul- July of twenty-three, we will have a plan that we will be sending in to DHCD, so they can see where, where we are progressing on this. And all, all the communities will be doing that. And I imagine at that point, they're going to say, okay, this is what we're seeing coming in from all these towns. I guess they'll have to make another decision as to, you know, what, what the deadlines are going to be at that point. Because we're not going to be the only ones in our situation. The one, the good thing is that we've kind of come out early to, to have some experts on this thing to, to help us along.
Mr. Chair? With regards to the DHCD's discretion, just as another point, the stick for not, for not meeting compliance is not only these set groups of granting that they have specifically labeled, it is potentially any other funding that DHCD deems in its discretion to withhold. That's, there are two points of this byline, and I'm not directing this at you at all. I'm only, Bob, you know, you and I have a very good working relationship, and so I want to make it clear that I'm not directing this at Bob. This is my frustration in the months that the Economic Development Committee has been going over this. The, there's, the main points that the state, what they are putting on, is, is this, number one, this ability for DHCD to simply say, we're not giving you money. And they have, as the, as three-eight is written right now, they have total discretion as to what money we can be, we can be refused. There's also the, this seven hundred and fifty unit, because the adjacent towns are labeled that we have to have ten percent. And because I am sadly, get on, I'm, you know, like a dog with a bone, I went through all seventy-seven towns that are adjacent communities and fall within the ten percent. There are eleven towns where ten percent is less, ten percent of their current housing stock is less than the seven hundred and fifty minimum. Sixty-six of those towns of the seventy-seven, seven fifty is far above ten percent.
Oh.
So, for example, Millis had, it's based on the two hundred, two thousand and twenty census.
Test data, yeah.
Millis had three thousand four hundred housing units. I think it's three hundred fourteen, three thousand four hundred seventeen. Ten percent is three hundred and forty-one. Well, seven fifty represents, does not represent ten percent. It represents twenty-two percent of our current housing stock. So, if we use a big farm down on one fifteen, if we use, if we zone it for the old GAF property, and someone comes in and builds that, we are, we're, we could potentially see a growth of twenty percent housing stock in this town. But Millis is on the lower end. There are communities where this seven hundred and fifty represents upwards of eighty percent of their current housing stock. So, I just don't, I feel that, I mean, my personal opinion is, is this whole ten percent thing is just so disingenuous on the, the state's part. We're going to label it ten percent, but we know it doesn't, ten percent isn't a realistic number, because sixty-six out of seventy-seven are not going to fall into that.
Right.
And the towns that are over that seven fifty are communities that are big communities that have areas, and if you are a non-adjacent community, and you have some of these, you can take areas that already have this sort of zoning, or for example, like, well, Norfolk's an adjacent community, but Norfolk has built all of this, these townhouses along the commuter rail. Oh, no, they're not adjacent, what am I talking about? So, they can put their zone, they can designate their zone where they've already built, so it's not necessarily, so they're not necessarily bringing in new, so, okay, but for Norfolk, it's relatively new. You have the city of Newton that has commuter rail, that has buses, that has subways, they have everything they, that, you know, the MBTA wants. They have areas, and I grew up in them, that are forty, fifty years old, that are multifamily dwellings.
Mm-hmm.
You, they, the city can, can go and put their, their multifamily by right in that area, and meet all of their requirements, and never actually add a single new residence because of the way it's written. They can use pre-existing areas that already have multifamily, and they can make it now just multifamily by right. So, there's a lot of nuances when you start reading this, and I don't, I don't know how we're going to protect ourselves, because if we do spend two years doing this, and we come up with these, with a bylaw that we feel is going to pass their approval, and we get to town meeting, and town meeting goes, I don't want seven hundred and fifty new units, and they don't approve it, now, what do we do?
Yeah, yeah.
We now potentially lose millions of dollars in state funding.
Yeah. And you know, if you remember, in our Economic Development Committee, that one of our members said, you know, this comes down to one word, to, you know, it's ten percent of your housing stock or seven, or seven hundred and fifty units.
Yes.
And how is that going to be interpreted in the guidelines? I, I'm going to, it's going to be very interesting to see how they interpret that in the guideline, because it is...
Well, it doesn't, no, it doesn't say, or it says seven, it says ten percent, because the zone, the percentages are ten percent for adjacent, fifteen for, for commuter rail, twenty for, for buses, twenty-five for subway, or something like that.
Yeah.
But it says, because it has, you have to have a minimum of fifty acres, and those, and you have to have a minimum of fifteen units per acre, it's ten, fifteen, twenty percent, whatever the percentage is, with a minimum of seven fifty.
Yeah, yeah.
So, those percentages are, in my mind, are disingenuous, that the state is dumping on us. And I don't know how we, how do we deal with that? How do we get around? I mean, I don't, again, speaking solely for myself, I have, I don't have an issue with establishing a multi, don't look at me like that.
No, go ahead, George.
And in the Globea Journal that you mentioned on Sunday, that was really one of the points that they made. This is a one-size-fits-all. You've got one hundred, you've, you've got a hundred and seventy-five communities, and none of them are the same. They're, they're all unique, each is unique. And so, how do you take this one-size-fits-all and apply it?
A question. Now, we have Stony Brook, we have half a dozen other places around town that are, you know, small apartment buildings. Does that become part of that whole? Good question, isn't it?
It is, and it could be.
She talked, she talked about Newton, okay?
Right.
So, you've got all this land behind Roche Brothers, not land, but these buildings. You've got a bunch of them down on Union Street. There's a whole bunch of all these little places.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't, because in these zones, it doesn't have to be fifty acres contiguous, but it does have to be, it's at least twenty acres contiguous?
Something like that, yeah, yeah.
So, even if we were to develop this as a, an overlay district, and we come up with this zone, and we say it's going to be here, here, and here, you have to have, they have to be zones that are at least twenty acres. And most of these, the areas that you're talking about, except for possibly Stony Brook, are less than.
Well, if I remember correctly, I think, isn't, isn't the old GAF plant, isn't that like eleven? That's like eleven acres.
That's eleven acres, yeah.
Yeah, so that's eleven. So, if you picked up eleven there, and you went across and picked up Stony Brook.
Right.
That could, you know, that could, we could get a, a chunk in there.
If we're allowed to do it downtown.
If we're allowed, if we're allowed to use, well, no, yeah, no, and that goes to the, them clarifying the...
Here's the whole thing, who's in charge?
[laughing]
Okay?
Right.
And they want us to do, you know, this is the typical state government bullshit. No offense, sorry. They mandate all this stuff. Oh, you, go ahead, but if you don't do it, we're not going to give you any money.
Yeah, right, right.
It, it sounds like there's a, there's a bunch of tree huggers in there that want all this stuff, but they're not taking in, some of it's not realistic.
Well, I think in the thing with this is, and as we wrap this up next, but I think the, I think the guidelines, when they come out, Bob, like I said, you're like Nicole said, you know, we're not beating up on Bob Weiss. We understand, you're the, you're the funnel, and, and I got it. But, you know, some of the frustration is, just like George just said, is that, you know, they've put out these specific requirements of what we're going to, what we're going to lose, you know, or, you know, and they don't tell us how to, how to, the path to success. And that's, that's the thing that really frustrates me on that. So, thank you for the presentation, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, and can you, we'll invite you back again, so we can beat you up some more.
At a regular basis.
Okay, good.
That's fine.
One last question. Does the Sherman, Dover, Collyl, all those towns, are they part of this whole thing?
Yes, they are.
You can't tell me that they're going to allow something like this in those towns.
I, I can't tell you that.
Well, I mean, the thing with it though, if you, if you go backwards, if you look at Westwood and Lexington, I mean, the units that they've done, it's kind of like, they're very nicely done.
Yeah.
But, like, my, my biggest concern on that is, is that I, if it's for families, I think they miss the point on it, is I don't know necessarily that what gets built out is going to be affordable.
Right.
I mean, that unit there over in Westwood, I would bet you those units there, if that was, say, that was a condo in there, Westwood, that's eight fifty.
Yeah.
A million bucks.
Yep.
Yeah. So, if that's, if that's a family house, then I got to find that family so they can have another adopted person.
Then we're back where we started.
Yeah.
One more rate hike, and we're all...
Well, that's just it. If you've got eight hundred and fifty thousand, or even, you know, six hundred thousand to buy a condo in Westwood, and you have two children, three children, you're going to come further out, and you're going to buy a home.
Assuming those are even priced appropriately, with the jobs that we've been mentioning in terms of the blue collar sector, good luck.
Well, that's just it, I mean, if you, that's assuming, that's just saying, assuming if someone can afford that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar condo.
All right, we're going to move on. We need to move on.
Okay.
So, thank you, Bob, once again. All right, next item on our agenda, slightly behind schedule, is a Form A application, approval not required, plan two, number two and four Frontier Lane, John McDonald.
Nobody's presenting this, Dan Merrick couldn't attend.
Right, so.
I'll walk through it.
Yeah.
Do you have, can you see the plan in your packet open?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Do you want me to get some of the full...
No, it's fine.
So, anyhow, basically, on this one, I called Dan to find out what it was. The existing house, they're going to remodel it, and when they remodel it, the angles on basically the bump out that they're changing would be too close to the lot line. So, they're adjusting the lot line so they can adjust the front of the house, and it'll need zoning. That was the, that was the impetus behind doing that. So, that's the only thing that changes. So, I make a motion that we, unless there's any other questions, I make a motion that we approve the A and R for number two and four Frontier Lane.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you see that on the sign before you can...
You get a browse for that, right? Forget it.
Will you read those?
And, hold on, what did I do with my? Oh, it's right here, okay. Okay, next item, Dunkin' Donuts traffic discussion. So, do we have, did you have the letter in here?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, so Dunkin' Donuts remodeled, and it turned out well, and when we've driven by several times, there have been cars observed on the sidewalk, down the street. I've actually seen them down the street, and the concern being is, when we initially approved the Dunkin' Donuts, that the queuing of cars was going to be, you know, closely watched for, you know, safety reasons. We can't, we can't have cars, we can't have kids walking down the sidewalk and having to walk into one oh nine because somebody's trying to get into dunks, and we can't have cars on one oh nine obstructing the road, so that, that, that's really kind of an issue. So, we forwarded this to a couple of different people. There was an option that maybe there could be some informational, maybe Dunkin' Donuts could do a handout to their regular customers and state that, you know, or have somebody out there to tell people they can't park in the sidewalk. The other option is to have a police detail that they would pay for, and for a couple of, a couple of times, and that might get people's attention to, you know, so they wouldn't have to do it all the time. But after, you know, maybe after a couple mornings, having the cops out there saying, hey, guys, you can't park in the sidewalk, move on, go. But there has to be a resolution. It's not necessarily our issue on finding the resolution, but we've identified it as an, as a, as a problem. So, is there any thoughts from the board? George?
First of all, I think we need to change the sign.
Yeah, but I, going back to Brutus, you, what Brutus would say, you could put up a sign that says, you are dumb, and people would still drive right through it. They're not going to read it.
One of the things I noticed tonight when I drove, uh, driven by a couple times, I think we made a, I shouldn't say we made a mistake, we didn't make the entrance to that entrance wide enough. And I know because there's one parking space. So, once somebody pulls in, no matter which way they pull in, they don't go to the left, they stop right in the middle.
Right.
Biggest thing is they're blocking the sidewalk, which is obviously illegal. So, maybe a yellow sign that says, please do not block sidewalk, you know, whatever the mass law is, I don't know what it may be, and then have a cop parked across the street.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't know, I mean, we, we could go to the, we could go to the operator and say, listen, guys, this is your, this is your issue, you know, come up with a, come up with a solution.
In the original decision, way back when, they were supposed to have someone come out and make the people move, which is ridiculous. First of all, it's not safe, and someone's going to say, get lost, you know? And, you know, they don't have enough people working there anyhow. That's, that's another issue. But the, I'm, I'm sure they want to correct it, but it's, it's gotten progressively worse, because nobody want, it's just like, one of the things I was going to bring up at the end, they want, the MBTA wants you to build all this stuff, people are working from home. They're not going to go to the MBTA to go in town anymore. People don't want to get out of their cars anymore, and actually, they don't even open the doors there until seven o'clock now, so you have to drive through. So, that's become another issue.
Right. I mean, you know, not getting into the weeds on it, I mean, I think with a lot of these restaurants, they also offer, you know, a lot of options, like my, my daughter goes to Starbucks, and she gets a triple macchiato with a double shot of whatever it is, and it takes, it takes, it takes five minutes to make the coffee, and, you know...
And they are woefully understudied.
And people are, you know, people who want to get that drink are willing to wait ten, fifteen, twenty minutes, you know? I'm highly caffeinated, so if it takes me longer than two seconds to grab it, I'm going to explode. But I mean, I, you know, and, but that's anyhow, that, that's neither here nor there. I, I think we've, we've identified the issue. I think what I want to do is, I think we should have Camille or the planning board send them a letter stating the fact that, you know, we've noticed that there has been there a violation of the special permit, and there have been cars, you know, seen on the sidewalk in, on one oh nine, and they need to come up with a plan to be presented to the board of how to, how to resolve the issue.
I mean, I think a, a different colored sign with, you know, it says do not block driveway, but I think if you put do not block sidewalk, then, and the reason I keep bringing that up is because if they're blocking the sidewalk, now they're, you're basically, it's a finable offense. They can, they can get a ticket for it. Blocking the driveway is different than blocking the sidewalk. And I have seen on instances, a couple of times I've gone by, and people are trying to walk around the cars, and that's...
I think if they took the sign, and they put it on one of those Nerf bats...
Oh, I probably did.
That would probably work, and they could just whack them.
Oh, and I know what you're saying, you can't, you can't make...
You can't fix dumb.
You can't legislate, Stephen.
Yeah.
They put the onus on them.
Right. But I, I say, yeah, so I say, we, we send a letter, go ahead.
I mean, there, there is this, this letter from Chief Safia that has said, if, you know, if nothing changes, he suggests that they be mandated both by our board and the police department to provide a detail in the morning. And I think whatever we notify them with, say, you need to resolve this and resolve it quickly.
Right.
Or this is what, this is the only other option the town is going to...
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to... Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I, what I would say is, let's, I think we should, I think we should, we should do that, we, maybe what we could do is include, maybe we could include a, a note of, of, you know, of a, this as a, as a possible mandated solution if they can't come up with another one.
Right, no, I'm saying, we should give them, right, but if this continues and you're unable to.
Fix the problem.
To fix the problem because you have the safety issue.
And I think we should put a timeline on it.
You have the safety issue for those people, and it's gonna get worse in another seven weeks when the kids go back to school, but you also have the number of cars that are backing up there, you know, on the, waiting in the street to pull in, there, last week, I was at, I was at the lights in the morning trying to take a left from Plain Street onto Main Street, had the green arrow, and there was nowhere to go because there were three cars in the road, so all that traffic was backed up. Now it happens when the police have, or the fire department need to get out. Now we're talking about major safety issues, if there's an emergency, if there's a fire, if there's a car accident somewhere else in town, and the crews can't get out, or the fire trucks can't go, so whatever, you know, they, there definitely has to be a fairly short timeline. Part of the problem is now.
Let's, let's just, I think, what I wanna do on that is, is I know there's a lot more points to that, but let's, let's start the initial one. Let's put the letter together, we'll send it to them, let's put that, we would like to have a, a, a plan in hand by the next meeting.
The point I was gonna raise is that when they redid the redesign, they moved the order board from the back left corner to the back right, so now there's more space after you order to when you go to pick up, but that just means there's less space from when you pull in to the order board, so there's less space, there's less availability for queue, for waiting, so.
Which is all the good, don't care, they've got a, no, no, but let me just finish, I, I, 'cause I wanna end this. I got it, they're backing up, not our problem, they need to figure out how to take care of it, let's send a letter to them.
Can we suggest that they move the, the board back?
No, I don't wanna, I mean, I, I'm, I don't wanna suggest anything that would be a cost implication. If they came back and they say, "Hey, listen, guys, we're thinking we may wanna move the board back," no, that would be, that would be my thought on it. I, I don't wanna suggest anything, let them, let them give us the answer.
So, do you want something in writing from them, or do you want them to attend the August 9th meeting, or something in writing by August 9?
It, it's up to them, they could, they could, they could put it in writing, or if they wanna attend, they're more than welcome to attend.
So, it goes to both police and fire, so it is now a safety issue?
I'm sorry, say that one again, George.
Should it go to both the police and the fire department?
The chief said to just CC him, so I would CC both.
Yeah, we'll, we'll copy and both on that, sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Can we also just, for my own notification, unless I can access it elsewhere, attach a copy of the special permit from when they did the renovation?
I have, yeah, I have it in your packets, yeah.
Perfect, okay, yeah, so then I'll just look over, yeah, 'cause I just wanna make sure that I, the condition is we draft up the letter, just to make sure that they understand, like, look, we agreed to allow this subject to the condition that these items are addressed.
That was a, that was a big to-do when they got the draft.
That's right, I remember it specifically.
That was the first one, not the current one, but I think it's mentioned even in the current one.
Yeah, so that was, yeah, I'm sorry that I missed it, but yeah, I, I remember that specifically when they.
It's always been in each, you know, modification to their special permit about traffic concerns, and they always say that they'll deal with them, so.
So, we're asking them to do it. All right, next.
Alan is not here, but I did email him and he said he's one and willing to sign on for another term with the Community Preservation Committee as the designee from the planning board.
All right, I make, I make a motion that we nominate Alan Handel for the Community Preservation Committee designee, designee from the planning board.
Seconded.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Is there anything else we can designate him to, since he's not here?
And the other thing is just, the annual has to be done for the start of the fiscal year for 2023. Motion to have either Nicole or Rich sign payroll timesheets, and motion for Rich to sign on behalf of the planning board for Bill's payroll.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, did you guys hear all that? No, I, I, sorry, so, the.
So, if any money's missing, we know where it goes.
Exactly. I make a motion that we.
Authorize.
Authorize Nicole and I to sign payroll, and we, what else am I doing, authorizing you, need to sign your timesheet.
Authorize you to sign on behalf of the board.
Right.
Great, seconded.
For Bill's payroll, sorry.
Yeah.
Motion's made, seconded.
Should've just said, "I make a motion to do whatever."
Whatever, well, I don't know if, I don't, I don't know if they could, I don't know if they could all hear that, that's why I said it. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from June 7th, 2022.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'm gonna do a quick update on the items happening in the town, just 'cause we hadn't done that for a while.
Just one quick thing, this is the end of the minutes motion. Nicole, go ahead.
I did, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay, so, this is the update for what's happening in the town, Bob Weiss put this together. Anthology at Millis, which is the assisted living at Dover Road, the water connection's complete, sewer connection is progressing, roadwork is in progress, they're sheet rocking and advancing the main building, and they've actually started to frame some of the outer cottages, I drove by the other day and took a look at that. Regency at Glen Ellen, they are progressing, 233 units of housing are on the tax rolls at this point in time, and the project is wrapping up phase two, gonna be going into phase three soon, so, that's a good thing, 'cause that'll be more, that's more units on the tax rolls. Six One Seven Therapeutics, that's the old across from Bada Bing's, they're closing in the final phase one construction inspections, the odor and noise study is being reviewed by the town consultant, and developers hope for a Board of Health hearing for operational license in September, October, so that will go online in the fall and will be on the tax rolls, which is good. GTE 1480 Main Street, that's another cultivation item, developers are at the start of the odor and noise study, anticipating a late fall '22 review, are looking to Board of Health to issue an operation soon after.
Okay.
Adversa Wellness withdrew, 114 Union Street, that's the old Herman Shoe, basically nothing has happened on that, they knocked it down about a year ago and it's still sitting there. Woodlands Cottage Ave, Treska Brothers, that is still sitting, nothing's happened on that. 232, 248 Main Street, 48 units of affordable housing, there is a, a permit has been issued for foundation work only, no building permit issued yet, that is, that's a 40B local initiative project with 48 units, of which 12 are low income, and I guess there's a significant public concern over the safety of proposed crosswalk on Main Street, so. Seven Water Street, the DPW garage is done, they finally paved the parking lot, all done, that's just about 100% wrapped up, they ordered a generator for the mechanics bay, and that is gonna be installed when they can get it. Sparhawk Academy over on Orchard Street, that's about 100% done, they put the radar signs up, it's all grass, I, I anticipate they'll be in there in the fall. 1344 Main Street, Cobble Knoll Estates, originally designed as 25 units of single-family duplexes, it is now a 40B project, there are, developers asked the select board to increase the project from 25 units to 28 units with seven affordable units, and the water main from Main Street has been brought into the project. Emerson Place, they're putting in the water lines now, they have issued a building permit for a model house, I think they were, they, they wanted to get two, they, some, according to this, they issued one, those are going to be built, however not occupied, they wanna actually build one unit and that way people can walk to or look at it. 117 Main Street, Hammond Lane, water and sewer extension permit was granted for 17 units of residential development at the select board's meeting. McDonald's, they're framing it now, we just approved the minor field change, I would anticipate that would be open in the fall at the rate they're going, they didn't tell us, but that's my guess. Bigelow Farm Solar, we approved that last fall, and not much of anything has happened with that to date. PFAS Treatment Plant, that is underway, they're building that right now. Lansing Millis, 64 Exchange Street, that's the old train station that used to be the town hall. Permanent Building Committee went through and looked at it and came up with some ideas of what could happen with the building, cost estimates, the town, it was very expensive, we made an application to the State Economic Development Bond Bill for $425,000 to just basically stabilize the building, so it's patched up the holes and, and fixed the roof, so at least, you know, we may not be able to deal with it right now, but it won't fall down in the meantime, so that would be nice. And then the town planning initiative and the 40A MBTA rezoning, which we just talked about, and Bob explained that there were some grants given for that, for, they gave us grants for money to work on the imposed, the imposed, you know, mandate from the state, so they're, it's nice enough that they imposed the mandate, but they're actually giving us money for it, so. All right, that was it, does anyone else have anything?
Well, there's two things, the 1344 Main, which is 1178, man, can we use those for a part of our housing?
Oh, I don't know, that's a good question. No, I mean, we'll have, that's a good question, we can ask that.
They're both downtown.
Right, well, I think that's part of, we need to get some definition of what we can do, what can't do.
Oh, definitely.
You know, so when we go to, you know, with, and with the consultant and with some guidance, if we can draw that circle and we can include some stuff, you know, that might be helpful. I, I think, you know, my biggest concern.
Well, except, these aren't multi, like, 1178, that's not multifamily dwelling, this has to be all for multifamily, 'cause right now Millis only allows multifamily dwelling by special permit.
Right, that's where the whole zoning question came in, that's why we have to redo.
We don't, well, it's, it has been proposed, you can do it as a, an overlay.
Yeah, but I think, I think I agree with Josh, and I think.
Our zoning needs to be redone dramatically.
We need to go through our zoning, it's, you know, we had the, we, we've had multiple zoning changes and overlays.
You can only put the mandates on for so long.
Right. So, we need a young buck that's willing to jump in there and.
Can you volunteer yourself?
No, no.
All right, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
You've got the ball.
All right, great, thank you.
Don't go anywhere, I have to resign.
We have to sign the thing too.
This is, we have, this is for us, a withdrawal decision for Adversa Wellness, if you would sign.